Okay. Good afternoon. Welcome to our council time on March 13th. We're going to start with a councillor role call. I see everybody's on, but who's going to do that? Everybody's pointing to Kristin.
Yeah, no problem. Councillor Young?
Here.
And councillor Marshall?
Here.
And councillor Belkot?
Here.
And councillor Bowerman?
Here.
And Chair Medvaji?
Present. Thank you.
Perfect.
All right. Well, we made it through that flawlessly. Any amendments to the agenda?
Good afternoon, Chair. This is Leslie Lopez, Chief Civil Deputy. I do have an amendment to the agenda, and that would be to remove executive session items 9.2 and 9.3.
If you could repeat that.
Yes.
I'm sorry you're not feeling well.
Yeah. So she's asking to remove executive sessions 9.2 and...
To remove it.
Yes, and 9.3.
So 9.2, 9.3. Any objections to removing those two?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, hearing none. We'll amend the agenda in that way. So that gives us 30 minutes instead of 40 minutes of executive time forecast.
Actually, I believe that's 25. 10, 10, and 5.
We should take a lottery on how close we are to these times. So I'll amend that to be 25 minutes once we get to it. Okay, so any other amendments? Public comment on agenda items only. And we'll start in the room. So Greg, are you going to be speaking to the charter amendment? Because we don't get to that until a little bit farther along.
Then I will speak later.
Thank you. Okay, so this will be a presentation for those that are proposing charter amendments. This is the time right now for general public comment. It won't be like a hearing where we take individual public comments. Thank you. So go ahead and please state your name for the record.
My name is Janet Landisberg, and I'm here to talk about the charter amendments that you're proposing. And I've worked with Greg Kimsey on the thing that he's going to hand you about his proposals. And having served on the redistricting committee, I want to emphasize that we put in RCW because when I was in court, the lawyers representing the county said, "Well, we're a charter county, and we don't have to comply with state law." So I wanted us to make sure that the redistricting we did isn't consistent with state law, but I think it needs to be in the charter. Secondly, we worked on trying to change the timing process to make it so that the council gets the input from the two parties in a timely manner, so everybody is on board. So we don't face what we did last time where there was like two days or one day for people to get their nominations in. If we set it in the charter, then everyone knows what they need to do on a timely basis. We also want you to think about having the redistricting master appointed by the county council as a member of GIS, because they're the ones that know how to draw the lines and do it. And so it shouldn't be necessarily our choice. Leave it up to the GIS to pick a person who's knowledgeable enough to do this. So those are, in short, some of the things. We're just trying to fix what happened last time so we don't have the same problems. We're setting forth how much the majority is because that was an issue too when we had... And so we're just going to be more clear and concise. Now, when it comes to the charter, having the charter elections, and then you have, I think it's 9.1, the section about changing the process for the Charter Review Commission. I'm currently serving on the City Charter Review Commission, and so I just want to say that we gave the council members an opportunity to come and talk to us, and most of them didn't come. So if we're opening our meetings to the public, it seems to me that the county council members who want to have input should have the same status as anyone else in the community. And the reason I'm saying this, I know you're looking at me funny, Mr. Medvaji, if charter...
I couldn't disagree more strongly, but go ahead.
If charter review members are elected by the public, by the same public that elects county council, then why are you saying that yours are more important?
Okay, so thank you. That does conclude your three minutes. I would just, if you aren't already working with Greg, because some of the points you've covered on redistricting, I know he is addressing on timelines, the majority, supermajority issue. I mean, we all saw that before the process even began, that this was doomed to failure the way it was drafted. Are you working with him now? Does he have all of your input?
Yes.
I see a thumbs up.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next comment.
All right. Anyone else in the room? No? Okay, I do have two people so far online. Jackie Lane, please go ahead with your comment.
Regarding the proposed charter amendments, I'm extremely pleased to see that you intend to fix the redistricting language, and for that I thank you. The two amendments, the initiative process, were passed in 2021, so I'm not entirely sure what else you need to tweak there, why that wasn't addressed last time, but we will see. The election terms and terms of the commission were passed overwhelmingly in 2021, so I'm not sure why you're not accepting the will of the people on that. That said, it may be that the longer term would not have been needed if the county not dragged its feet getting the charter commission started the last time around. If you seat them the minute the election is certified, that would give them time to get their work done in one year, and it could be alerted to the schedule ahead of time. Section 9.1 or 9.2, the responsibility and duty, and here I have to agree with the prior speaker, while the county could have attended any meeting and submitted input the last time around, you chose not to. Now you want to impede what is a citizen process by having them do what you are quite capable of doing, and what you are doing now, proposing charter amendments on your own. This is a citizen process. It should be allowed to focus independent of the council and focus on what the community that elected them wants them to do. And then my last comment, on the sheriff's salary, the sheriff's job is actually smaller than it used to be since he does not have a jail to manage anymore. So I'm not sure why that raise is needed and then no raise for the rest of the other elected. So that's just kind of a puzzling thing for me. But anyway, thank you very much, and you all have a good afternoon.
All right. And I do have one more person who's called in. Caller, please unmute yourself and state your name.
This is Kimberly Gohean Elbin, life citizen of Clark County, Washington. There's many citizens that know more than I do about the charter. And I want to mention on record that Mr. Medvaji is quick to cut the public off so they can't finish. I mean, right at that three minutes, when in reality you can let them finish their sentence. But I think they're starting to challenge what the council's doing, so we want to cut them off real fast, right? Well, I'm against that. We spoke about the citizens being aware of what's going on. That's been my complaint for over a year, that we need a quorum of the public citizens therein when you guys are running our government. It is our government. We ask you to run it in the right way, and evidently the people are starting to speak up, saying that you are not. I want to speak on the voting in elections. I went down and handed in my voter thing, anyway, to vote in person, and I spoke to the clerk there, and she actually told me that DMV and DSHS are actually giving illegal immigrants not only their driver's license, but they automatically sign them up for voting registration. I am absolutely against that. We need to stop that now. I know on the radio today from Lars Larson, he's on FM Radio 101.1, I listen daily, that there were some issues on the machines that are running our voting, and there's already a problem. They messed up a lot of stuff, so we need to make sure that our voter integrity, there's a lot of hardworking people out there, mostly Republicans, working to get our voter integrity straightened up here in Clark County, Washington. I want to speak a little bit, so yeah, I'm totally against that. But I looked up your food waste. New York State has passed something that is very interesting. They want to feed hungry people and this and that. I know my grandmother and I back in Battleground, we would go to the stores and they'd give us our produce. We can't do that anymore, and I think that's wrong. I think what they don't give away, they should give to people like myself so we can feed our farm animals. That'd be a great way to just let the people be free, go in and ask, and once they're established that I won't sue them for getting gangrene or something, that we can sign a waiver of release, that we can receive those boxes of food so we don't have it in our garbage as there is a law now for the organics in the system now. So we want to have less government telling we, the people, what to do. And you guys, I'm hoping strongly that the citizens start getting awake here as to what's going on in our local block.
Okay, thank you for the thumbs up. Do we have any other callers out there?
Yes. Carrie Niles, please go ahead.
Excuse me, I've kind of got a cold here. But can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. First, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak. For those of you who don't know me, I am a former Clark County Charter Review Commissioner. And so I just wanted to kind of explain a few things about some of the things that you want to change that were voted on and approved by the voters, I think a year and a half ago. The reason, the term of two years, the reason that was chosen, because when the Charter Review Commission started working on and getting public input, we found that, and you'll see, you know, they have it here in their notes as well, that you have an August deadline. So if you're starting your term in January, you have till August to get all the public comment, to go out into the community and try to get the community buy-in and stuff. So that was just, that had to be done by August to have things on the ballot. So that's why we put it to the voters, and they decided on that two-year term or until the work is done, because that's the only way we could really assure that we had, you know, the people's input. So that's why that's there. I don't really know what you, I guess since public comment is before, you guys talk about how you'd like to change the initiative process, and, you know, truly the kind of the redistricting process, though I agree with the people that commented before me about redistricting, that it does need to be addressed. As far as the five-year term that was voted on, because as was said before, we ended up with a lot of changes because there was, it didn't, there was a tenure lag, and so there was no charter amendments, and we weren't able to look at what worked and what didn't work. So that was put to the voters, and they overwhelmingly approved that as well. So thank you so much. I just wanted to clear that up for some people from, you know, somebody that worked on the Charter Review Commission. And thank you for doing this work and allowing me to speak.
And that's all.
Okay, I do believe, no other comment in the room? All right, so that concludes public comment. Old business minutes. I did have a couple typos that I typically don't read.
I move approval of the minutes on March 6.
Okay, thank you. I did see that we spelled or gave the wrong name to Greg Johnson. We have Fred there. It's in the heading of council reports. And then maybe Jordan can clarify this, but the meeting at Battleground, is it correct to say that they were against the railroad or against the application of the FRDU? I mean, we haven't gotten a resolution. We haven't had those follow-on meetings yet, but I didn't want to mischaracterize what you heard at that meeting. So those are my two comments on the minutes.
For the record, Jordan Bogie, on that update, there was a lot of conversation about a lot of different pieces. I think you, they were certainly against the FRDU. I think there were some, some of the Battleground Council were definitely against any expansion of activity on the railroad whatsoever. Some of them did talk about how they were not necessarily against the railroad itself, but, you know, more limited activity they were interested in. So I don't know the best way to clarify that, but...
Well, how about if we, so number one, I'd make an amendment to change Fred to Greg, and then perhaps change against the railroad, just say against any expansion of the railroad. Would that be more accurate?
I would say that's certainly a fair characterization.
If I could just add a little bit, I think what they agreed to is moving forward with a potential resolution, and there was really not a lot of detail related to what that resolution might say.
So we can leave it as is, but I would like to see Fred change to Greg, so we at least name the director of the I-5 replacement by the correct name. So, and he's second to the amendment.
I'll second the amendment.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries as amended. New business, 5.1 proclamation, food waste preservation week, or prevention week, not preservation.
Good afternoon, councillors. Again, for the record, Jordan Bogie. So this is an updated version of the proclamation that I shared with council via email, I think, last week. And then this morning, I did send an updated version to council based on some internal comments that I had received. So thank you to Sarah Kearns from the Solid Waste Program and Public Health for making those updates. I know we don't have it up on the screen right now in front of us, but those edits were related to both clarifying the, let's see, one, two, three, four, fifth, whereas, related to the average household of four people wastes more than $2,500 per year on food that goes uneaten. Just clarifying that point, which was unclear in the previous version. And then below, Food Waste Prevention Week, the big bold heading, there's a little more discussion of what the ask is for residents, which is to take action to prevent edible food from going to waste. And some ways that they can do that is learning about cooking creatively with leftovers at the Cascade Park Public Library, and also listening to the podcast that the Food Waste Prevention Week folks are going to be putting out. And so we'd be looking at this point for any comments or edits. Otherwise, three thumbs up from council to present this on March 26th at our council session, if you would like to.
Okay. I see Karen's thumbs up. I don't see Michelle. I know you're there. Do we have your thumbs up?
Thumbs up.
Okay, super.
Thumbs up, just, I mean, I don't want to wordsmith it to death, but the very last sentence seems to me to imply that we should only take action to prevent edible food during this one week. And I don't know if it would be worth the effort to modify that to, really to learn how to reduce during the entire year. I don't know, just a thought.
I'm sorry, which sentence are we looking at?
Oh, it says, "In Clark County, Washington, and encourage all residents to observe this week by taking action to prevent edible food from going to waste."
But I think this proclamation is for a week specific.
I think it's...
We say this week and throughout the year, but that's, proclamation is identifying the one week.
Right. Something just implying that we're not doing it just this week only would be helpful. But again, it's not the end of the world. I think people understand.
Yeah, so I think we've got three thumbs up as is, and I would invite you, when we read the proclamation, to make some specific endorsement that we should live our lives this way. I mean, I'm not only old, but I'm old school, and I was raised by my parents who lived through the war, World War II, who lived through the Great Depression. We reduce, recycle, reuse everything, and we never left our dinner plate with food on it. So, you know, I'm hopeful that people do kind of get back to basics. This is great to put a dollar value to what's being wasted by your average family. I mean, I, so I look forward to having this read as is. So you've got all thumbs up.
Wonderful. Thank you, councillor.
All right. So potential charter amendments. How did you wish to proceed with that?
So this is just getting the initial direction from council. What I put on the document was just some of the process timeline and costs for this as provided by the auditor's office, and then based on councillor feedback and our auditor adding potential amendments. And so today, because I want to make sure we're not waiting till last minute if council wants to put charter amendments out to vote in November, so I can quickly go over these, or we can allow Greg or any other councillor can talk about these, but just looking for direction. Is this something, yes, we want to do, and if so, which one, so that we can start moving?
So, and we have representatives from the Sheriff's Department as well on their proposal. Greg, did you want to come up and make comment first? I think maybe that's the best way to start, and any comment that Sheriff's Department would like to make on theirs as well.
Well, I'm happy to speak a second time. Thank you. It's Greg Kimsey, County Auditor. Thank you for the opportunity to suggest that you present two charter amendment proposals to the voters this November. Yeah, it costs a lot of money, but democracy isn't cheap. So the first proposed amendment I'll speak to you about is what Janet spoke earlier about, is the section six, I think it is, for redistricting committee. And as the person who wrote this section of the charter in 2014, I know the intent of the original language was that the tension existed in the appointment of the four members of the committee, then the appointment of the redistricting master, and that the, it would require a majority of the four, five members, excuse me, the tension existed when they appointed the chair of the committee, and it would require a majority of the five members to change what the professional redistricting master would come up with. It was not the intent that the five members of the committee would say, "Well, we want this precinct here, over here, and that precinct there and there," but that they would provide, you know, general guidance to the professional redistricting master and then have a plan presented. And yeah, if a majority wanted to make changes, they can make that. And then that amended plan with the majority members would be presented to the council members. So what this proposed amendment does, first, makes it clear that it is the plan presented by the redistricting master that is considered by the committee, that can be amended by a majority of the committee members. And second, it then changes how the redistricting master is selected, because as Janet said earlier, I think it's certainly in the best interests of the committee. It's what happened last time. It's just what makes sense that the redistricting master works for the county's GIS department. Clarifies a little bit also about timelines of when the committee is appointed, so they can get their work, it can be really all set up and ready to go to work when the census redistricting information is presented to them. So, oh, and then finally, it incorporates reference to RCW that says redistricting plans have to be equal in population, contiguous properties, similar populations. Those things are set forth in RCW, which I think are pretty obvious, but apparently some attorneys don't see it as obvious. So that's, if I could, I'd like to give each of you a... Any questions or comments I can respond to on that?
So let me say this, today's not really the day to get into the detail of what it says and what it doesn't say. I think what we need to do is, is it important enough to spend the money to seek this charter amendment? So I would speak to that right now, and you can comment on it. I mean, we had, I think this will happen again, despite the fact that we had a pandemic, we had census data come late, the state got it late, the state performed late, we got it jammed us late, the timelines were crazy, and on top of that, the Charter Review Committee decided they were going to add another county and additionally set a map generally for us based on old data. I mean, it was just an absolute confluence of bad things. But nevertheless, you know the timeline is poor, poorly stated, just the makeup and what a supermajority is. It was doomed to failure, no matter what the circumstances were, and it's important. So I, you know, I wish, and it's good to highlight how the costs went through the roof because of a change in state law and how these are funded. So it's important to highlight that, you know, this is going to be expensive. It's not exactly cheaper by the dozen. It's a little cheaper.
A little cheaper, though.
A little cheaper. But anyway, so I think I support it. We need, this is one that needs to be tightened up, and there's no other way to do it. So anyway, other comments by council?
Yes, I have a couple of comments. I think I'm the only one that was personally affected by this. And I remember asking you at the time, I think maybe it was the week before filing deadline, if I file for two or five or both, and if I guessed wrong, too bad. So I think this is really important. The one thing that caught my eye, though, now that these positions are nonpartisan, and it appears that the committee is selected in a partisan way, I don't know if that's, maybe there's no other way to do it or the best way to do it, but just make a note that things have changed.
Yeah. There's lots of different ways to do it. What's the best way? Is that your decision? Yeah, this thing was, the original language was modeled very heavily after the state commission. And so we've seen some areas for improvement since then. And want to make the four members nonpartisan? I don't care. I think the idea, of course, is to have kind of some tension there, have different viewpoints brought to the table, but with some checks and balances of that as well.
Yeah, you succeeded on the tension part.
Yes, we did. So, you know, first, yeah, I recognize this is not today. We're going to talk through the details of, you know, this T across and that I dotted. I really appreciate the opportunity to bring this forth to you for your consideration. Really appreciate Kathleen reminding me of this and bringing it to your attention, because, yeah, the deadline to get the resolution to the auditor's office will come at us really quickly. The second proposed amendment that I'd like for you to consider regards section 7.2, the initiatives. And that is, what I'm attempting to do with that is to, again, clarify the original language in the charter that has been interpreted very recently in a way that I know was not the intent of the people who drafted the charter, because I drafted the charter. And so the clarification is to really make sure that there's a two-step process when somebody files an initiative. Let me back up just by saying, I think one of the most damaging things we see in our government is when, if you think about the statewide initiatives, it's when someone sponsors their initiative, goes out and collects signatures, gets on the ballot, voters approve it, then it's taken to court, and the judge says that initiative is unconstitutional. And voters, I think, are, well, I know, voters are very disillusioned with their government when that happens. So the intent of the original charter, and then clarified in this proposed amendment, is to prevent that, because as I'm sure you know, there are very clear limits on what local initiatives can do, much more limited than what state initiatives can do. They're limited, local initiatives are limited by the Constitution, state law, and court rulings. So it's, again, this original language was intent, or was the goal, to say, if you're presenting an initiative here locally that does one of these, I think, six things that are defined as clearly outside of what a local initiative can do, then that initiative's not going to be presented to voters for their consideration. And then beyond those six elements that are very clearly outside of the scope of what local initiatives can do, there's an undefinable number of other elements that local initiatives cannot affect. Local initiative could not say, we want to merge Clark County with Calhoun County. That's not possible through local initiative, but it's not one of the six elements described in the charter. So, this sets up a two-step, two-step process in that regard of what elements, what initiatives can go forward to voters and what initiatives cannot go forward to voters. So if it's one of those six elements that have been clearly defined by the Constitution, state law, court decisions, the initiative does not go forward. Now, a sponsor could change the initiative and refile it, and, you know, that's certainly an option. And then, if it does pass that first step, the prosecutor has responsibility to look at the initiative and say, yeah, this is within our opinion, is within the scope of what local initiatives can affect, outside of the scope of what local initiatives can affect, or we have no opinion. And I have a recent, come to better understanding of why no opinion would be often the right response. Secondly, the first question, often the first question that lawmakers have when they're proposed, when they're seeing a proposed law, you know, if you're in Olympia, someone gives you a bill to sponsor, first question you might ask is, how much is this going to cost? How much is it going to cost to implement it? How much is it going to cost afterwards? In the existing charter, there was some poorly drafted language, guilty, regarding increased revenues. It's in conflict with the limitations. So it deleted that section and instead put a new requirement, sorry, Budget Office, that if the local initiative proposal has a financial impact, and only if it has a financial impact determined by the Budget Office, then the Budget Office will provide an estimate of what it costs to implement the initiative and then to fund that on an ongoing basis. So those are the two really substantive changes that I'm proposing. There's a couple other cleanup stuff, but those are the big things.
Comments? Again, we're not looking at the nitty-gritty of how it's drafted, but really making that fundamental decision, are we going to go to the expense of putting this before the voters?
Chair.
Please, go ahead.
Couple of questions real quick. I'd just like to get a little bit of clarification. So, this would put it on this November ballot? Okay. So, I'm trying to understand this. So like, it's $150,000 for one, it's significantly less for a second, third, and additional, even though there's other items already on that ballot?
Correct. And, yes, and I-
If I could.
Of course.
So, the, as you, as I'm sure you know, the cost of election, cost of conducting election is borne by the jurisdictions that are having, have offices or issues on that ballot, and then also by the number of voters in each of those jurisdictions. So there's three elements. How many jurisdictions have an issue or office on the ballot? How many voters are in that jurisdiction? And then how many, what's the number of offices or issues on the ballot? In 2024, there will only be, well, only two jurisdictions for sure, Clark County and the state with the presidential and congressional races, and there will also be a couple of other, I think, I think City Camus has an issue coming up on November. I'm not sure. Anyway, there's only a very small number of jurisdictions on the 2024 ballot. And election costs are expensive. 2020, 2024, presidential election is going to be almost a million bucks, about 25% more than it was four years ago. So, but it's, as you said, Counselor Young, the, each additional issue or office that a jurisdiction has on the ballot does cost significantly less than the first one.
And Greg, I believe one of your staff members said too, there's a change in that the county now has to pay for the return envelope, the return ballot, whereas before, the state paid for that?
Yes, however, the more impactful change is that the state now pays its share of the cost. So it was a trade-off. They're no longer, they'll no longer pay for the prepaid postage or return postage, but they will pay for their share of the election costs. We're way, way better off with that change than before.
Okay. So thank you for that. And just one more question regarding that. So if we were to put this on different elections, could there potentially be savings versus what it would cost to go on this particular election?
Yes. You know, it depends, right?
So you don't really know until we know what is, where it's going to go on?
It depends.
Okay.
I will say, as a, I think, a factual matter, in a year when there's all of the, you know, most of the county offices on the ballot, that's the cheapest time to place questions on the ballot, county questions on the ballot. Yeah.
Okay. And then just last question, how do you feel the urgency is, that it go now versus, you know, later election?
The initiative one, not as urgent. I do think the, sooner we get that resolved, the better off we are, because we will continue, I think, to look at it and say, you know, this still doesn't quite work right, as much effort as people put into it. The initiative amendment, however, I think is quite important, because I just fundamentally believe that it's so damaging to people's confidence in government to have this initiative process go forward and then for it, you know, go forward all the way to the ballot and voters approve it, and then for it to be found unconstitutional or outside of the scope of what local initiatives can affect, that I do, I do think that's a very important amendment to the charter.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And, yeah, I'd be supportive.
And not that you don't want the nitty-gritty, but I'm going to give it to you anyway.
Yeah, just to add a couple of comments to that, because the price has gone up substantially. And I, just in the time that I've been here, we actually balked at putting something on the ballot that was estimated to cost $30,000 to $50,000. We thought, oh, man, that's just too expensive to do it. And, you know, the off-year elections typically putting it on the ballot is far more expensive than putting it on, which would be now our on-year election in this 2024.
Just to further explain that, I mean, I didn't do a very good job of that before, but, yeah, Counselor, you're absolutely right. In the odd number of years, when the county doesn't have anything on the ballot, that's a very, in general terms, that's a very expensive year for the county to place issues on the ballot. So next year, 2025, would be more expensive than this year, when we already have two offices on the ballot.
And I think the threshold issue is, I mean, we have four proposed, there may be more, although I think we're fast going to run out of time to agree on that. And it does take a supermajority. It's one thing in the charter that is different from all our other voting, so it does take four votes to move something forward. And looking at four, I mean, it's close, and these are estimates, and it's a range, it's close to a quarter of a million dollars. Anyway.
What price democracy?
Thank you. Did we want to have a presentation by the sheriff as well? I know he couldn't be here today, and he sent an emissary.
I certainly hope I meet his expectations in that regard, emissary. Good afternoon, counsel, staff. For the record, Jim Hansen, under sheriff. He does send his apologies that he's not here to present to you or speak briefly to you himself. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you briefly. The sheriff extends his support for your consideration of this charter amendment. He is very sensitive to the expense, as you've all been talking about. He is much less concerned about the expense if there were, in fact, multiple charter amendments being considered. They're not quite cheaper by the dozen, as he said, Chair, but it does help a little bit. I think that he, as I, believe that there is significant concern about the salary of the sheriff, and that from a philosophical standpoint, it should probably not be so great that it serves as the primary purpose for somebody seeking that position. On the other hand, nor should it be such a, so low that it's a significant disincentive for otherwise very qualified people to seek that position. And so our mutual concern is that while I don't know how long Sheriff Horch will be serving, he will be replaced at some point, and I believe that there are significantly qualified persons, not me, who will eventually be potential candidates for sheriff, and our concern is that very qualified people would be disincentivized to run for sheriff. And so it's a significant issue, I think, for the office of the sheriff and for the county. And so at that, again, just his appreciation for your consideration of that and his sensitivity to the expense. It is an issue of concern to him.
So, one point of clarification that he had highlighted to me, and I, you may have mentioned it, and I missed it. If we were to put it on, and I think it's palpably unfair the way it is, it should be changed, but if we were to put it on and the voters changed it, because of state law, it would not impact his salary, it only would come into play if he was to retire and someone else was to run. Is that correct? I say a hand by Greg Kinsey, but did you want to answer it first?
If I could, just briefly, and subject to correction by the auditor, that is our understanding. And so the sheriff is very much in this fight as it relates to the future office of the sheriff. I don't know what his intentions are, but he certainly would not be eligible for the, through the completion of the current term, which he has essentially three more years. And so, yeah, unless there's some correction to that.
No, I, you said it right there. You said it right there. I just wanted to, I'm not an attorney, I don't play on TV, but now I'll give a legal opinion. My understanding is that you can't change the salary of an elected official during their term of office, it's only the subsequent term of office. So you wouldn't have to retire, but you did say it correctly, but next term, not this term.
I was probably overly broad by saying retired. Yeah, I meant to this term of office. Any other comment you wish to note?
Thank you again for the opportunity.
Yeah, go ahead.
And maybe Jim can talk about this. So, Jim, wasn't Sheriff Horch, when he was formerly not the sheriff and officer, wasn't his salary substantially higher as compared to now him being elected?
It was, and thank you for the question. He did knowingly take a cut in pay. He felt as though he had a greater purpose to serve and continues to feel that way. And his desire is to now address this concern he has about the future of the sheriff's office and the issues that this presents. So, yes, thank you.
Yes, so he's taken on much greater responsibility, obviously, now he's the county sheriff. So, thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Other comments or questions?
I have a comment. My thought is that, you know, this may be well-deserved, I'm not questioning that, but if this opens up the other elected officials that might want to come forward as we consider this and whether or not we'd be weighing additional salaries as well and what the budget impact would be, I'm happy to examine this further, but I'd like to see more information. Thank you, Jim.
My thoughts on this are, I feel like our role as the council is to determine whether the request is warranted based on the cost and the timing of it being placed. I personally feel like when an elected official comes to us and requests to have something placed on the ballot for an amendment, they were elected for that position, they're the expert. Our job is to look at the financial impact of that. So, having said that, I think that, you know, the comments from our auditor were, to me, they warranted moving forward with that. And once you do that at this point, now you've opened the door towards inexpensive for these extra ones. So I feel like if our other elected officials recommend that we place something on the ballot, I think it's, and the way I look at it personally is that I will always support what is being recommended to be placed on the ballot. May not support it passing, but support it being on the ballot.
Hearing no further comments. I think what we'll need to do is, at the end, kind of clean up and see if we have support to move forward on which ones and how many. Well, I'll open up the discussion on the Charter Review Commission as opposed to one of the callers. I've kind of changed my view only because of the cost, because I think there is an alternative to highlighting what the Charter Review Commission does once it's up for reelection again, and we could do that by resolution at no cost. Basically, my position was, you know, one, no elected official was queried, no election elected official testified. testified. Our county manager was on each and every meeting. She was never asked a single question. So those that are actually performing the work of governance in the county, no one ever went to them. After about six months of flailing around and watching this process unfold, at one point, we did get an email that said, if you'd like, you could have three minutes, like any other public person, to make a presentation. So one, I think half the year was lost. And what charter proposals came up did nothing to solve any governance issues in the county that the county manager could have weighed in on, or any county counselor. You know, different electeds may have different comments to make. Greg's initiatives that he wants to put on, his amendments, are really, really needed. That could have been something that we could have addressed at some point. Anyway, but we can do that by resolution. We can't just promulgate from here saying, hey, there's a better process. There's a much better way to do this. If you get elected, first order of business, select your own officers. Second order of business is start taking public testimony from those doing the job. So you can have an agenda for the rest of the year that actually makes sense and may actually improve the charter and how we work and do our daily business. And that part's completely missing. I'm reluctant to spend 150 or more thousand dollars to tee that up for the public. So I don't feel as strongly as I did. The other things that were anomalous because of how things were interpreted, we have, the committee was supposed to meet once every 10 years. They changed that to once every five years. And then they put amendments on the following year because of a loophole. So it became a two-year cycle of charter amendments, and now it's on a five-year, more rapid pace. So literally, every four years, we're going to be looking at charter amendments, which is, in my mind, too much turmoil for a constitution, for a charter. So that was, I don't know if that would have to be a separate proposal to close that loophole. I mean, you have a single subject title. You have legal nuances here, and Greg spoke to that a little bit about the process itself. And I've seen the initiative processes, you know, it's been here ever since the state of Washington's been here. It's a right that is so important to the people. And we're seeing that play out this year as well. But it gets abused. And I saw it abused in great measure in California. And some of the pamphlets in California would be 100, 200 pages long. And not any, there wasn't a pro and con that really analyzed all of it. So the public was just really voting often on a catchy buzzword, catchy phrase, save our children. Everybody would vote for it, not knowing what the details were that someone had put in. The legislative process is a great way to make law. And the initiative process needs to be carefully tailored. Anyway, so if there's, I was really pushing on this last year, having seen what I thought was really a poor outcome from the first charter review that I sat through or watched from the sidelines. But I think there are other ways to get to it. Obviously, you can't change the loophole without an actual charter amendment. But we could at least publicize it. Because the committee shouldn't get, they should get one election to put charter amendments before, not two years' worth. Any case, that was my thought process on the Charter Review Commission. I just think there's a much better way to do it, a much more efficient way, and one that will get to substantive areas that would improve how the executive runs, how the council runs, and perhaps the other individual elected offices.
So just so I understand, so you're not suggesting moving forward with any of these to go on the ballot? Is that correct?
I'm suggesting I have much more cold feet because I'm cheap. And I just, I'm still undergoing sticker shock with these. These prices are basically quadrupled from what I expected to see.
Right.
Okay, no other comments?
Madam Page?
Please, go ahead.
This is Leslie Lopez. I did have a question about making sure I understand what you mean. When you say, instead of proposing a charter amendment, there could be a resolution to state how the charter commission conducts themselves? Is that what you're suggesting?
I was just, once I saw the sticker shock of the price, I was thinking, well, how, if I don't want to spend the money on this and see what the public does on a vote, we could at least use the offices of this council to lay out a better process. And then the Charter Review Commission could adopt it, either because of peer pressure or because they think it is the best way to move forward. And we could do that by resolution without spending $150,000 to have the charter actually change, to require it. That's what I'm.
I see what you're saying. So it would be a suggestion by council to use a certain process? Is that, is that what you're saying? Because according to the language of, I just wanted to make sure, according to the language of the charter, that the council would not be able to mandate how the commission does its process without a charter.
I would honestly say I'm having a really hard time understanding what you're saying.
Yeah, Leslie, if I can help. I think the question is, is the resolution that you're proposing about the process, is it understood that it's just a suggestion to the Charter Review Commission? Or, because I don't know if Leslie knows if we can make them follow the resolution on how they conduct their.
Yeah, no, this is to put it out into public domain. Hopefully, the local journalists will pick up on it. And then whoever gets elected would see the value in it and adopt it. Yeah, there would be nothing, nothing to control them without a charter amendment. I just offer that up as a more inexpensive route to get the word out. Does that answer your question, Leslie?
Thank you for the clarification. Yes, thank you.
All right. So let's move on. Yeah, so, I mean, I kind of included the 9.4. I mean, that would take a charter amendment, but.
Thank you. I think a lot of this was driven by your desire to change some of these things. So I'm all in favor of a more inexpensive way to approach this. But if we're looking at what the auditor is proposing and what the sheriff is proposing, do those departments cover the cost?
So the bottom line is, is it will be general fund. So if we ask the sheriff, he could easily say, we don't have money. So then we have to cover that. So in the end, it's general fund, and it will be taken from one-time fund balance and one-time available money.
Thank you for that question. That was, when I saw this amount, I said, well, can we just make, go back to the electives that are proposing this and have it come out of their budget? But it's our budget. Yeah, we're not taking public comment during this process. So 9.4, any, to move on, or any other discussion on the one-year? That was a loophole. Basically, it took the PA's office to say, well, there's nothing that constrains them to put charter amendments on to the next, next general election or next election beyond, even though their role ended in December. Okay, how about section 9.1? Yeah, okay. You're just describing what I just said. Okay. Was that all of them then?
That is all that I have heard. So of course, if there's other ones that council wants to consider, you can certainly bring those up. And then, like you said, if we could go one by one, just to see if we have support to move forward or not.
Yeah. So again, this isn't talking about the substance of it, the nuance of it, other than, is it important enough for the county to spend this money? And then obviously, it will be a lot of work to wordsmith, get everybody happy with what's going to go on the ballot, and all the nuances of that, to get someone to write a pro, to write a con. That would fall on the auditor. Oh, it wouldn't, okay. All right. So why don't we, at this point, I'll let Kathleen lead the process to make sure you have clarity on what's approved by the council and what's not. And I, Leslie, you know, it takes a supermajority to actually put it, to approve it. I mean, that's the last step. But to have four to vote for this preliminary process, I think we're okay with just three votes. Do you have a different opinion on that? Is Leslie still there?
Yes, she is.
I am, yes. Yes, just to, for the thumbs up to move forward. Are you not passing the actual amendment? So just three is fine.
I mean, there is going, I mean, Greg's already done a great job on his, but I mean, this will be work, including the pros and cons and doing a press release and everything. So I would ask if we have four now, because if we don't, I don't want to have to do a lot of work that we're not even going to consider it at that point, if that's possible.
I'm for just leaving the Charter Review Commission alone?
Just clarity, but are you supporting the other amendments that are suggested by the?
We're going to do one by one.
Oh.
So how about we start with section 6.5? And I guess this might be a question for Greg. Can 6.5 and 6.6 be on the same ballot? Or do they have to be independent? Because I know we have to have one item per amendment. Is that considered? And maybe you don't know. That's okay.
I'm not an attorney. Don't give legal advice. And, but I will go at risk and say, yeah, I'm pretty sure this would be considered a single subject and could be one question on the ballot.
Okay. So we'll still do 6.5.
I support it.
I hear three. I need online Counselor Belkot or Counselor Bowerman.
I support it.
I support it.
I do not.
I do not.
Thank you. Section 6.6, the redistricting plan. Support.
Yes.
Counselor Belkot?
No.
No? Okay. And Counselor Bowerman?
No.
Okay. Section 7.2.
Yes.
I support.
So this would be a second title now. So just, numbers in my mind are starting to add up. So I just want to make sure that you guys know this would be number two. That would go to the 125,000 to 195,000. Okay.
I'm sorry. Which one are you?
7.2, the initiative, as presented by the auditor. I think I've heard two yeses.
No.
No.
Okay.
Go for me.
Go for me.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to go with a no as well. I think there's too much broken, even at the state level, on the initiative process. And I think the public will read this in the wrong way if we try to limit it or tailor it, even if it's an improvement. So I'm a no vote.
Any other feedback before I move on? Because obviously, you won't have four for yeses. Okay. I'll just lump the charter review stuff all into one. So any of the charter review items, which would be 9.1, 9.4?
So I obviously support it. I just don't want to pay for it.
Gotcha. I'm a no. Okay.
No.
No.
Counselor Belkot? Okay, thank you.
No.
And Counselor Belkot. And then section 5.5, this is the sheriff's office, or the sheriff's salary.
I'm a yes.
Yes.
I'd really like more information.
Okay. And.
It's a budget impact.
And one thought that I was thinking of, our auditor was talking about the costs and about when, did you say it would be less expensive potentially next year? No? Okay. Because there is time if it has to be done before a cycle. So you, Counselor Marshall needs more information. Correct.
If I could.
After we get more information, I think in a way.
I'm sorry. Karen, were you a thumbs up or a thumbs down? I didn't really hear.
Down.
Down. Okay. Do you still want to add your comment?
Well, I just wanted to try to clarify. If you place one charter amendment on the ballot in 2025, it'll be more expensive than placing it on the 2026 ballot. However, if what you're talking about is the salaries of an elected official who is going to be elected in 2026, the candidates will not know what that decision of the voters will be.
Yeah, understood.
So.
And hope springs eternal that maybe the legislature will refund some of the cost for elections. So, go ahead.
Yeah. So it sounds like if we're going to do it, now would be the time to do it. And the fiscal impact would not be felt till '27. Is that correct? Okay, I think I'm moving to a, I think I'm moving to a yes.
I think I had three yeses and two no's. Counselor Belkot, did you weigh in on this one with the sheriff?
I did. I was a yes. I think maybe we might want to do a roll call because this is, it's hard to hear.
Yeah, we can, we can do it one more time. So Counselor Young?
Yes.
Chair Madhavji for yes. Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Bowerman?
If we still get more information, that's great. I'd like to find another way to accomplish the same objective, and I think that would be possible.
Unless there's some sort of special grant with the sheriff, but the charter actually has the sheriff's salary in there, and it's adjusted by the Washington State Salary Commission, which is identified in the charter. So unless there's some other separate thing from salary, it would not be tied to that amount. Counselor Belkot, what is your vote?
I was a yes.
Okay. So that gives us four, four yeses. Thank you. We will start working on all of the language, the pro and for, and also get the costing and the staff report in front of council on the Tuesday to approve that. And that will be adjusted during a supplement.
So just pause for a second. The auditor has one more comment.
If you'll allow me, I would have an observation. While, of course, we're all very sensitive to the cost of these, placing these issues on the ballot, if you are, I'll just remind you again, if you are going to place one issue on the ballot, each additional issue is significantly less expensive, significantly less expensive.
Yes, they have that information. So I, because the one amendment was 150 to 160, and then for the second amendment is 175 to 190 total. So I have yes on section 6.5 and yes on the sheriff's salary. So I have yes on section six point five, and yes on the sheriff's salary. Okay, we will keep you guys posted as we move through this process. Thank you.
Okay, thanks everyone for that. Now, going to five point three, I would change the title to investment interest, but did you wish to introduce that?
Yeah, sure. So this, and I sent a update to council on this as well. But Chair Mevige is on the finance committee, the countywide finance committee, and had proposed some questions regarding the interest earned from that meeting, and also about how much money is actually budgeted for interest, if there is. So we have Emily, our budget director, who has some information, our auditor, our finance director, Mark Gassaway, and then Sarah Lowe in the treasurer's office is online as well. So. Why don't you guys just come up, since we're all part of this discussion, and everybody can hear? Did I hear Sarah's going first? Is that what you're trying to say? So Sarah, Mark said you're going first.
Good, good afternoon councillors, Sarah Lowe, Chief Deputy Treasurer in the Clark County Treasurer's Office. I apologize that I am not in person today. The Treasurer's Office administers an investment pool on behalf of Clark County, as well as all the other taxing districts where we serve as treasurer. All cash that is not needed for immediate use is invested in this pool. Currently, Clark County makes up about fifty percent of the pool, with the remaining districts, including the school, fire, and other special purpose districts making up the remaining portion. The pool does fluctuate based on different things like bond proceeds for schools, and so the county does have an unusually high percentage of the pool at this time. Participants in the pool do earn interest off of these investments. Interest earned is allocated back to the invested funds. So, for instance, the general fund's balance, the earnings on that are given back to the general fund. Interest is allocated monthly and is based on the average daily balance a fund maintains in the pool. So interest is effectively prorated based on the balance. All interest earnings are booked into Workday, our county's financial system of record. I know there are some questions regarding the budgeted pieces of interest, and I'll let Emily fill those, the county's budget director. But I just wanted to sort of introduce the concept of the investment pool, who participates in it, the county, as well as all the districts, how interest is allocated back to the invested funds, and that they're all recorded within the county's financial system.
Sarah, for the introduction. Emily's what's a budget director for the record. Just wanted to maybe fine tune the specific question. We can talk about the general fund in general to start out with. All of the funds have various baseline budgeted interest earnings revenue, and that can fluctuate year from year depending on what the investment pool returns. So for the general fund, there's a half a million baseline budget. That's budgeted every year as part of the baseline process. And then, as you guys found out about this year, the overage that came in from the interest earnings basically falls to fund balance. We don't budget up and adjust that up and down based on the volatility of the revenue, and just the fluctuations of that, not knowing it at the time. So the money does come in, it is receipted, it goes, go to fund balance. It is made available through the forecast and the budget process to spend on new things, but it is not adjusted every year right now.
So let me give you my thought process and why we're even talking about it today. Because it's a significant amount of money. We're talking a billion dollars. Roughly twenty-seven million dollars in interest. And I, and I think the public, I expected this room to be completely full of people just waiting to hear this news. So purpose number one was just for transparency. The public needs to know how healthy we are. This goes to our bond rating. It, it's just a huge source of revenue, too, that I think all the council should pay attention to. And, you know, after that meeting, I went back and I looked at some of my old binders on some of the budgets, as well as supplemental budgets, and I tried to look for that, those, the reporting of that interest revenue. Now, you know, fully half of it, we wouldn't see it anyway, because it's just schools and other entities. But I couldn't find it listed anywhere. And what I've come to learn after the fact is that, you know, it's pretty much buried amongst all those other hundreds of smaller funds. But when you put it in context, you know, when this council raises property tax by a percent, you're raising another seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars or so. And yet, we had these millions of dollars of interest come in, just interest income. I thought it was an important context for the public to know and for the council to know. And then, you know, the nuance in the future and the questions I'll have as part of this finance committee is, what's the best use of it? Can we use more of it? Do we just keep reinvesting it? You know, where is that, that revenue going to right now? So those are the questions I had, and that was the basis of putting it on the agenda, just so we would have some additional visibility. Do any councillors have questions at this point?
Yes, as I heard you explain this, this billion dollars, if that, if it is a billion dollars, it's all of the taxing districts, the schools, the fire departments, everyone. And we hold these funds until they, they need the funds, and the, and the funds are expended throughout the year. And interest is accrued, and that goes back, whatever interest on their particular funds goes back to them. So it's not as if this is a pot of money that, that the county council could, or we can budget in any particular way. And then I also heard you mention the volatility of it. So if it's unusually high this year, you know, why, what, you know, maybe talk a little bit to the volatility of it, and how much of it could actually be counted on for, for, for revenue and expenditures?
Certainly, and I think the best way to maybe articulate that is, is just to narrow it down. So specifically about the general fund. As I mentioned, there's about a half a million dollars budgeted in baseline every year. This year in particular, it was, looks like four point four million in additional revenues were received for that particular fund. And depending on where the funding is, that the interest earnings are, it goes back to that fund. So if it's mental health sales tax, it would go back to that fund. If it's, it's public safety sales tax, it would go back to that fund. But that four point four is, is just the general fund. It's, it's, it's not for any other purpose, and that would come back to fund balance. It's not something we can depend on. It's not something that we would have ongoing. And Sarah might be able to answer this better, but from what I understand is, the interest earnings is based on the fund balance and then the interest rate. Is that correct, Sarah?
Yes, Emily, thank you. It is based on the balance that the fund has invested in the pool, because they do receive a prorated share of the interest earnings. But more importantly, it's based on what's happening in the marketplace and what our investments are yielding. And right now, we've really seen a change in the market. Interest rates have been rising for the last several years, and so we're investing at much higher rates. Prior to, oh, I want to say two thousand twenty-one, rates were, you know, hovering around one, two percent. And then, when the Fed came in during COVID, they actually brought the rate down to what you would consider almost zero. And so these revenues can be very unpredictable, and they really are reliant on what's happening in the marketplace, and what are allowable securities that we can purchase, what they're yielding. So it is a volatile revenue source. And if we look at the history, and I think, Mark, you did provide a history of the interest earnings by fund, or I know you have it. We can provide it again if necessary, but you can see that fluctuation over time in those interest earnings.
Other question, Mark, you have something?
I was just going to add, it's important to remember that the interest earned takes on the same characteristics as the, the fund that is earning those. So for example, if the interest earned goes to the road fund, it has to be spent for road fund purposes. It's not, it's not accumulated in a separate fund that says interest. So Emily referred to what was earned in the general fund, which has fewer restrictions on it. But that money, those revenues go to those expenses that are part of that fund. So there's not a separation at all. When we talk about general fund, we're talking about three hundred revenue streams. Interest is just one of those. And if you look at the financial report from two thousand twenty-three, you'll be able to see exactly what revenues in total were earned versus what expenses were earned. And again, the budget is a little bit different process, because we have to budget with anticipation of those expenditures. And to budget your expenditures based on a volatile revenue source like interest income is not recommended. So, you know, we kind of look over the past to try and predict the future, and say, you know, half a million dollars in interest revenue four years ago was pretty substantial. If you look at it now, because of interest rate changes and the amount of cash that we have on hand, it might be a little low. I mean, those are some minor adjustments we could make. But I would not recommend trying to pinpoint your interest earnings and then try and budget positions that are dependent upon that revenue coming in.
Other questions? Glenn, do you have something?
Yes, thank you. One of the things that I would like to understand a little bit better, so, okay, remind me again, what, the annual interest that came into the general fund last year?
For the specific revenue.
Four million?
Yeah.
What was that?
Four point four million.
Okay, so four point four million. So in our budget, we did not have any of that revenue included? So then, at the end of the year, when you're balancing your budget?
For, for general fund specifically, a half a million is already budgeted.
Okay, so a half a million is budgeted.
Yes, but like I said, the volatility, especially because the general fund has property tax, sales tax, other revenues.
Right.
Other revenues have three hundred plus revenues. This is one item in that line item. That whole other revenues has been going up and down, up and down. And so sometimes, we have to dip into one time to balance it, and other times, if we're more, then that falls to fund balance, which is part of the forecast and the available funding.
So we budgeted for five hundred, we took in four point four. So my question, and I know we balanced, so we spent, you know what I mean, we balanced, so. It's, I mean, there's not really a specific point that we, you know what I'm saying? Like, those funds were used, obviously, we spent those funds, but there wasn't anything, was there any situation where we're like, oh, you know, we have the shortage or we need this? Oh, we have this extra funding, we can use that? I mean, how does that go?
I, I think everyone has, has tried to say the same thing. If anything that is not spent in the year falls to fund balance, and the council has the opportunity to reapportion that, a lot of times, we will use the phrase one-time money. There's one-time money available for these things, or I'll come back in March or April and ask for assignments of fund balance. That's what we do with that fund balance.
Okay, yeah, and that's, I mean, that's trickled through various times during the year, I remember those conversations. So, and then just basically, the interest is just one of the factors that lead to us having one-time funding for something.
And the point I want to, I'm trying to make about micromanaging these general fund revenues like interest income, we have usually been very good at predicting things like property taxes because of the stability. And even, even sales tax to some extent, we're pretty good at, because we have a pretty good history and, you know, we kind of know the market direction. Well, in two thousand twenty-three, sales tax, we projected at four percent growth, because that's been our, our past history, but it was flat. So that's about two million dollars that we didn't get. Well, interest income, on the other hand, helped make up some of those differences. So when you take a look at the fund as a whole, we were, we were still about where our budgeted revenues were projected to be, but there's a lot of give and take between those three hundred revenue sources. Some come in, some don't come in. We have to, we have to be, I think, reasonable in how we estimate those things.
Okay, so putting it into simpler terms, you have your checking account, you're budgeting for what your income is coming in every month. You have this source that's more volatile, so you just, you're careful not to build your budget based on it. And then you're going through and you're getting interest and it's coming in, and then something comes up that there's a need to spend funding, and you take a look at the whole balance, and that's a portion of how you make the decision whether you can make that expenditure or not. And.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And all those expenditures come back to this council.
Great.
You get to see all of those.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And I would say, too, on the four point four million, based on the history, and I think, if I'm remembering correctly, that's, that was really high, right? It's like, three, four years ago, it was like five, six hundred thousand. So that's that volatility that we're, that you're looking at. The millions is, when I saw it, I think it was only a couple of years. The rest of it was between half a million and maybe seven hundred thousand in that, in this one particular line item.
Kathleen, that is correct. And actually, last year, we had our highest ever interest earnings on the pool. And that does have to do with the balance of the pool, but also what the investments were yielding, which were higher rates due to the market conditions. So that is accurate.
Any other questions?
This is just more of a comment. I've been contemplating here why this was on our agenda. And it seems to me that it's there because of the fact that that was not a separate line item that you found when looking for it in the budget. And so the thought occurs to me, and I don't know if this would be possible or advisable even or not, but would it be possible to list something like projected interest income not budgeted, kind of at the bottom after the others have, the other line items have been presented? And yet, it's included in the total as desired, as needed. And therefore, it would be listed, and no one could say that it's not transparent. And I think that is maybe the, the concern and the reason why it's on our agenda. I'm raising kind of a question, and maybe a one way to deal with it, or maybe all of you who deal with the budget could come up with a, a better way to ensure that those numbers are clear to anyone looking at the budget.
Exactly my point, Karen. So, you know, it was, I don't know that we're going to solve it here, but it's something I am going to pursue on my own as part of this committee, to see how we can have every councillor track it a little better and be aware of it, and see where it's going. Because there may be some nuances on how we want to do something differently in the future.
Well, I think that committee is a great place to deal with it, but I had thrown out one possibility. And I'd like to hear from the, the folks connected with budget, is something like that possible to do?
And I'll let Emily correct me, but I did send you guys the budget dashboard, that you can actually click on the bars of every fund. um that you can actually click on the bars of every fund and go all the way down to the revenue line item that is for this particular item. So that is on our county website right now. So anybody can go in, click on that dashboard, click on a specific fund, click on salaries and drive down and that will show you exactly what is budgeted in these items. So that is available now. So it is, there is a line item. It's just, it's a revenue line item deep in the thing. And so that is why we're having this discussion, because we want to make sure that council is getting what you need. And if there's going to be any change in what you want for the budget process, budget's already started for next year. And so if, I mean, and that other revenues is more than 300 funds. So this is one of those 300. So if you want to, want us to pull out this one item, that's a half a million in general fund, we can certainly do that. But just know there's hundreds of other funds in there. And all of those funds though are drilled down and available on the budget website right now.
Kathleen, if I may ask a follow-up question on that. You, you said, I believe that uh if you click on revenue, that it would show that interest as a line item? And if that's correct, what is it called in that, in that uh report? What is that line item?
Yeah, I'll let Emily, I think it's called actually interest revenue.
It's interest earnings or revenue. And there's actually revenue codes for all of those 300 line items in the revenue. And I would be happy to, and I know Mark would be as well, if, if you guys wanted to look at those in more detail and, and learn more about those specific revenue lines, we, we can produce reports. We can produce updates on budget to actuals throughout the year. Um, it just depends on what you guys want to focus on. Um, but specifically on this one, we, we can provide that in more detail.
Chair.
Well, just a comment, if that is called interest earned in the revenue line item, what could be more clear? And any, any counselor who has an interest in that can click on that, right? Or any member of the public can click on that.
Right, and I just would add that the printed budget reports are different than this dashboard. This dashboard is a much easier way to get in and drill down that. So that may not have been known at the time the question was raised.
Glenn?
Yes, I was just going to say, I, I don't know that, I, I agree with the statement of lack of transparency on this. I see it more as an issue of not quite knowing where to look. Because it's not handled any different than any of the other 299 items that are lumped into that one category of other revenue. So I don't see it being a lack of transparency. It's just an issue of where to go to look to find that information. But I'm certainly open, you know, if, if the council wants to pull that fund specifically out of other and have it treated separately, I, I don't see any problem with that. But I just, I don't see this, a lack of transparency.
Certainly.
Just for clarification.
It'll be a little tiny sliver.
I do not call it a lack of transparency either. I have heard that, however. And I, I think the, the important point is that we don't want it to be perceived by anyone as lack of transparency because we do not have that, period, in our budget. It is an open book. And I think we just need to be sure that it is known to be that. So if we find that line item by going into the dashboard rather than looking in the written materials, so be it. That's an easy thing to do and easier actually than wading through the written materials. So, you know, that's where I'm coming from.
So just to restate, because we are providing transparency by having this very meeting. I wish the room was full because I know it's a scintillating subject for the public. But most, if, I don't know how many counselors here knew that we had a billion dollars across the county invested and that there was $27 million of interest income coming to all those funds. I don't know how many out in the public know it. And I understand participation in some of the budget meetings is somewhat worse than even here. Now, people just don't come. But it's an important amount of money to be transparent about. And if, if someone wants to spend a couple of weeks clicking on 300 different funds to try to figure out how much interest is coming in flowing or how much is held by the fire departments and the schools and the general fund. I, you know, it may be, may be transparency is not the right word, but ease of having a dashboard of what is a significant aspect of our finances, that's what I'm hoping for. And, and just, um, you know, the slides that I saw at, at the committee meeting were perfect. I'm just looking for more ways to discuss and have it in kind of our frontal lobes uh as we uh go through the budget process.
And the, and the, it's my understanding, the quarterly investment meeting that you attended is open to the public as well and all that information is on their website as well.
And no one attends. But anyway, I, I think we've kind of culminated on this topic.
Well, I just want to make sure.
Unless there's additional comments.
Yeah, for me, I want to make sure we have clear direction from council, from the majority of the council on what we can do to help support and also ensure that information that is getting out is accurate. Whether it's from staff or from counselors or other discussions. So, uh, and there's a lot of, there's been a lot of work on this from the question from that meeting, from the finance team and the budget office. And if we're going to continue to do more work or council wants that, I want to get that direction from the majority of the council.
Personally, I, I don't think any more work is necessary. What percentage of the other source of revenue is this particular line item?
It's a small percentage, but I would, I'd have to get that exact number for you.
Yeah, I mean, the issue is that we have a huge budget and there are tons of different revenue streams, tons of different expenditures that we have. And it's incredibly difficult to wrap your head around it. I don't see any specific advantage to changing anything about this particular one line item that would make any more transparency. I think this is good for a conversation to come forward. People know to look now in that category of other, it's this conglomerate of 300 different sources of revenue. But I feel like that's, uh, this meeting is sufficient for that.
Council Young, to answer your question, those other revenues, they're about 30% of the general fund. They used to be much higher. Now they're only about 30% of the general fund revenue.
Right, yeah.
That's on an actual basis that we receive each.
Right, and, and that's significant as a whole, but each individual line item is not. It's the cumulative of all of them that makes it significant.
So in a $200 million budget in the general fund, that's $60 million.
And if I can too, just like I said on the communication piece, um, knowing that, you know, we are working on this and the last meeting, you know, was open to the public. I've actually heard from a community member stating that it has been said from the county that we don't have a budget issue, we have a billion dollars coming in. So, you know, so if we, just want to make sure that we're, um, how we can support you to be transparent and accurate when we're talking to the community because that, that's a, that's a big statement that I've heard, heard now, which isn't quite accurate. So I just want to make sure that we're on.
And it's not quite inaccurate either. And so maybe this is a footnote.
We don't have billions of dollars though.
Maybe it is a footnote. So for instance, we've heard reporting about how stable our property taxes are and what portion of the general fund that provides revenues. We also heard in the past that sales tax has gone through the roof and now it's going to stabilize. But we also heard that the other funds and revenue sources were falling off. And when we got a little bit further along in that discussion, the discussion was, yeah, there's, there's, it's 300 funds. It's miscellaneous stuff. We never got any granularity in that. This is another aspect of that and it's been doing really well recently. And it's pretty stable recently. Is it potentially volatile? Yes, it's an investment. We, anyone, anyone that invests knows that there's volatility. I mean, I look at the stock market every morning.
Right.
Sometimes three times a day, but anyway.
But the net impact doesn't change the outcome, right? It, it's an accumulative of all those 300 revenue streams. But if the council and the majority would like to see some of these reports that we can produce that have all 300 line items, we can start talking about this. We could talk about this specifically too. It's something we can keep you apprised of if that's what's desired.
Okay, well, again, I think we've culminated on this. I don't know that we need to do anything different. I would encourage people to watch uh the, the open public quarterly meetings that are open online. And then whenever it's relevant as to, oh my God, our investments are tanking. We've lost all that revenue stream, they've lost all of its value. We would want to know that. Uh, and I think on the other hand, if it's really doing well, keeping our bond rating really good, we need to highlight it in some manner. That, and we just did today. So any last comments?
Just one final question. Uh, I don't think we mentioned this, but from my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong. Well, we know that the billion dollars, only about half of it is related to the county. But from my understanding, the majority of the funds in there are, are reserve balances as well as like items that have been budgeted for, but with the, the expenditure is not yet. Like it's coming later. We know we're going to use it. It's not, it's money that's just sitting there that had, can be used for anything. It's already allocated for something, but it doesn't have to be spent right now. And so we're putting in, in there to try to earn interest until we have to spend it. Is that accurate?
So this is Sarah.
Sarah would do a better job.
Chief Deputy Treasurer. In the Clark County Treasurer's Office. Um, you are correct, Counselor Young, uh, 50% of the billion dollars is related to county funds. Um, I can speak broadly to what those funds are. Um, they are a culmination of many different things. They are operating funds, they are reserve funds. Um, they may have grants, other special purposes and uses. And as a general kind of just piece of context as well, most of our districts are receiving their main revenue sources on a, you know, two times a year cycle. So we're getting money for property taxes in April and then again in October. And then we have to basically, you know, slowly spend those down and make sure we're budgeting properly to get through the entire year. So a lot of those funds are related to, to operations. They're just not needed for today. Like you said, they're budgeted for use later on in the year. Um, but there are a multitude of uses uh for those funds. And just to clarify once again, the county's portion is only 50% of that total amount.
So can we move on to counselor reports or are there other additional comments? All right, counselor reports, we are, thank you for that. Any counselor reports on, um?
I have. Go ahead, Michelle.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I was just going to provide an update on the tolling situation. Um, as some may know, this week, um, the Oregon governor has canceled the tolling on Washingtonians going on to the Oregon side of 205. However, there is still a possibility of tolling um down the I, I 205 corridor. Uh, we'll find out that pretty soon. Um, but as it stands, it looks like the 205 corridor will be a high diversion area for all of those people who don't want to pay the I-5 corridor tolls that are still being proposed. So that's my update.
Thank you, Michelle. Karen?
Uh, yes, when um the county manager sent out the uh changes to rules of procedure that we would be considering, she said that if there were other proposals that would be made that we should uh bring them and could present them either under counselor reports or policy updates. So I have one that I would like to give to you now. And in fact, um, I, there it is. I sent it to staff so that we could all see it. Um, this is in the rules and procedures for the county council. This is, as you see, Roman numeral three, and it's the part in red under C that I am proposing, which um states that no singular member, other than the chair or their designee, as stated in 2B up above, um, may represent the council or give the perception of representing the council to any entity and outs, uh, any external entity unless authorized in advance by vote of the council. And um, anyway, I'd be happy to answer questions uh on that at the appropriate time, which I don't know if that is now or when we talk about the rules and procedures. But I did want you to know that I would be um presenting that for consideration.
So we've already noticed for the public hearing. So if there's any um changes, I would ask that we get those now. If council's supportive of this change, then we can incorporate that so it's ready for the, the public hearing.
And you're asking for a change on this language that's proposed?
Yeah, uh, Counselor Berman suggested the language that's in red down there and adding that to the rules of procedure.
Okay, I have no edits or amendments to it.
I, I have a question. I was just wondering if this has been a problem uh in the past or just a concern going forward?
The, the former. I was, uh, I'm, I'm always concerned when one counselor is working with an external entity um and um representing things that uh the outside entity might perceive as uh coming from council when in fact it comes from the individual who is present. So that is the, uh, that has occurred and that's the reason for the um proposal.
And if I could just briefly add to that, we've had the concern in the past, but with the individual counselors involved, and we're talking years ago, they were very prudent and careful not to represent themselves as representing the position of, of the council. So even though in specific issues, um, it was, it was a concern. Um, there was no sense that the spirit was violated, if you will, if you understand my comment. But so it's, it's a good addition, I think, um, to put it in writing. Anyway, do we?
I think it's a great addition. I'm sorry, Chair. Um, I think it's a great addition. Um, my only question is, what happens if it's violated?
Well, it's kind of like the other rules that we have. Um, we, the council would need to take appropriate action. And I would assume uh expose it at a meeting uh that there was a violation and um it could stop right there if council felt like that took care of it. And I would think that it would. Thank you, Counselor Berman.
I was going to say, we could, we could send it as an ethics violation to our ethics committee. But that's another topic for another day. Um, anyway, do we need to, so we had it on record, it's already been noticed?
Yeah, we only issued the public notice. I don't believe the document has been updated, yeah, or uploaded. So I think I heard Counselor Berman, Chair Mevaji and Counselor Belkot in agreement. So I'll go ahead and make that change in the rules of procedure and we'll update that.
Thank you. Uh, any, uh, Glenn, you had a counselor report?
Yes, I did, thank you, I forgot. Urban County Policy Board, we met this last week, went through the scoring process. It's now complete and there will be a recommendation coming for the county from the board for funding for this year's CDBG and home funding. So it's been a great process, just wanted to give a shout out to staff and for the support that they provided to the board during this time.
Okay, super. Um, so we'll move on then to seven, uh, work session requests. 7.1, Commission on Aging Annual Report.
Yeah, and before I do that, just going back to the rules of procedure, there are, other than like a typo, because I did retype the entire thing, if there's other suggestions, I'm not making any of those edits. So if other counselors are thinking about adding or deleting, now would be the time to, to say that. Or you can propose an amendment during the hearing, but I just want to make that clear.
Okay, so with that, any other comments on edits before we move on to work session requests?
Okay, uh, the first work session request is from Community Planning. This is for the Commission on Aging. Unfortunately, there was a technical issue when the. Unfortunately, there was a technical issue when the council was scheduled to meet with them, so they're asking for a 30-minute work session to have their annual meeting with council. The second one is from the Internal Services and Jail Services. So the pre-design is almost done on the jail remodel expansion project. So we're going between phases, and next phase is design. So this is a work session to get council up to speed before another contract comes before you as the next phase, and just kind of give an update on what's happened now, what's being recommended in the next step.
I have a comment on that, Kathleen. Has the road issue been resolved yet, or are we going to be discussing that soon?
We're probably not going to be talking about during the work session, but we, discussions are happening and adequate plan will be presented.
Thank you.
Are you in favor of that work session?
Absolutely.
Okay, super. All right.
The third request is from Public Works Clean Water. This is a talk about the clean water rate study and a level of service. And so it's looking at coming in April to present the council with a different level of service options that could be implemented from 2024 to 2029.
May I ask, was, yeah, I have my thumbs up. Was Devon waiting for that, or was she waiting on?
She probably was waiting for this one in case there was questions specific for her.
So are there thumbs up? Did I miss? Okay, we have at least three here, Michelle's, okay.
And then Vancouver Lake and Lackamasay Lake updates. So this will be 30 minutes for Vancouver Lake to talk about the grant agreement with Department of Ecology and also the consultant contract. And then for Lackamasay Lake is the final interlocal agreement between the county and KMS.
Yes, two thumbs up from me.
Done when you're here. Okay.
Sorry, Chair, you only get one.
I only get one, I'm sorry. All right, we.
And then I do have this quick update on the other ones. So fireworks, I'm looking at probably the end of April, just because I think it'll be important for the entire council to be available on that one. The public benefit rating system, we'll try to get this done beginning mid-April. And then we do have volunteer stewardship program, that's coming up as well. So just wanted to let you know that we're, we're working on calendaring. And I, I can ask you this separately, but is there any other, because fireworks in Vancouver Lake all certainly do around your schedule, is there any other work sessions that you want us to work around your, your time off? Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, so we'll go right to policy updates.
Good afternoon, council. Jordan Bogey again for the record. This will be a quick update for you today, just have two items. The first is that the legislative session, as you know, ended last Thursday, and Josh Nanaka, our lobbyists, are working on putting together an end of session report for council. And they're gonna, they're gonna present that, and I will work with them to find a time for them to come before council and give that, that update, albeit then working with that report and moving forward and helping our various county departments understand what legislation has been passed a session that has impacted them. So that's the first thing. And then the second thing I just wanted to note is that in the capital budget, the State Association of Counties received $4 million to provide grants to counties to do energy audits on their Tier One, which is over 50,000 square feet, and Tier Two, which is over 20,000 square foot buildings. And so I just wanted to make you aware of that, and folks at the county aware that there is grant money available for us to do energy audits on our Tier One and Tier Two buildings. That money will be given to WASAC in the next fiscal year, so starting July 1st, that money should be available. And so just, just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
Can you let Michelle Schuster know? She's been on a lot of those things with the PUD.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And that's all I have for you today.
Chair, before you move on, I have one policy update.
Please.
Back on, Jordan, excuse me. So we got notice on Monday from CJTC that they're going to start a corrections academy in May, and we're two years ahead of schedule on that. So our jail team is meeting with the state today to talk about a support that we're going to give to the local academy. And that means that starting in May, our recruits that we're going to have to go north are going to be able to be local. So it's a huge, huge benefit to our region and a couple of years early. So we're, we're thrilled with that news on Monday, so I wanted to pass that along to council.
Super, great news. Nice to have some good news. Okay, well, then we're done with policy updates. We have remaining three executive sessions, all under RCW 42.30, .110, PRAN 1, PRAN little I, the first one, and there is potential after action on the first one. Should take about five minutes. The lawyers will be present. The next one remaining is 10 minutes, and the one after that is 10 minutes. So total of 25 minutes. Let's, let's start that 25 minutes around 3:00, so take a short break, and then we'll plan on coming back, let's say at 3:30. So we'll resume with this council time at 3:30. We'll go take a break.
Hello, the chair has asked to extend executive session for 15 minutes, and the council will now be coming back at 3:45.
Okay, we've had our executive sessions with the lawyers, and we're resuming our council time. Is there a motion?
Yes, Chair. I move to grant Jennifer Bivers' request for the county to provide a defense and indemnification in the lawsuit entitled "The Estate of Jesse Booth at Al," the Clark County, at Al pursuant to Clark County Code 2.97.025.
Is there a second motion?
I'll say so. Okay, thank you for that second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and we are adjourned.